We're live, we call the meeting order for February 18th, 2014, out of Stanford Fledge of Allegiance.
Jim Davis.
Here.
Bruce Robinson.
Here.
Sean Kidd.
Here.
Ethan Long.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Barry Cunningham. And Don Williams.
All right, jump right in it then. Agenda changes or revisions?
We have none.
Fantastic. Minutes, we have a request for approval, I'm going to look at those.
I'll move a motion to approve.
Second? Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, carry. All right, public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing, please limit comments to three minutes per speaker, speakers should keep in mind that they are being broadcast on live television, and this is Paul, just come up. All right.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Paul Robertson, I'm the manager of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District here in Lincoln City, P O Box 974, Lincoln City Organize 7367. I'm just here to support the, one of your new goals, potential new goals out there, number four, Urban Growth Management Agreement. I believe it'd provide landowners clear directive and policy for those that are in the U G B as to how they may approach becoming part of your city, is one benefit, provides the mechanisms for developers to partner with the city to yet meet planning objectives that you may have and may not have other mechanisms to help mold. One of the thinkings, as I understand, Urban Growth Management Agreement, I'm here to listen and learn more about myself, is just how that that may provide mechanisms again for smart growth, if you will, which is really what we need around Devils Lake if we're going to keep it moving in a direction that's beneficial for us as users of the lake, property owners that may have ownership of the lake, water quality issues. Development is the number one cause of water impairment nationwide, it's not that it doesn't have a sewer system, it's just raw development, and so by creating a smart development mechanism within Urban Growth Management Agreement, you would provide people an opportunity to develop property in a sensible way, and yet gain the benefits of some of those large parcels that exist out there that currently they'd be stuck with one water tap, you know, as existing rules. So, just things to think forward, it has a lot to do with the objectives that the city and the Devils Lake Water Improvement District are working on right now regarding sewer-ing the lake, and the outcomes of sewer around Devils Lake definitely changes the development potential of the watershed, and so this is a big part, and I see them running in parallel with those types of works that are already in place. Really, it's just, again, smart growth, low-impact design, low-impact development tool out there, and I'm happy to see it as a potential goal, and hope that it's something we could see happen and adopt in 2014. Thank you.
The hall's our only speaker. Anyone else? No? Okay. Final orders, resolutions, and written communications, non-scheduled, public hearings, non-scheduled old business, non-scheduled new business, 14 Planning Commission Goals.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, under the commission's rules, you're required to set goals for the coming year at the beginning of each year, and I'm suggesting eight, and obviously open to more, it's your decision on these, I just want to run through them briefly and get a response and see if this is how you want to go. The first is Planning Commission Training. We have, I guess, a lot of new people on the commission, this is a good opportunity to bring people up to speed on how land use planning is done, not just in Lincoln City, but in Oregon, under the statewide planning goals and the state statutes that govern what we do. So, we'll be doing some training, trying to help you understand how the system works and your roles and responsibilities. Then, yes, every year we try to do ordinance amendments to improve the ordinance, put in things that need to be there, take out things that don't need to be there, we're looking at a number of things, the tree ordinance badly needs amendment, it is very difficult to work with, we've found, and is not very friendly to property owners, so we're working on revising that. Some revisions to the multifamily residential zone, in particular, there's a requirement that when an apartment project is developed, that it include parking spaces for recreational vehicles at a certain rate, certain number of spaces, depending on the number of units, and that has proven to be, A, an impediment on development of multifamily housing, and B, not really useful in terms of helping people deal with their RVs, because it's always, basically, it's been unnecessary, because most apartment dwellers don't have RVs, and if they do, there are alternatives for where to put them. There are some map corrections that need to be done, which amounts to rezoning, there are some areas like the Rhodes End State Park, or the Rhodes End, I'm sorry, not Rhodes End, D River Wayside is not zoned park, and we want to get that, we missed it, we tried to rezone all the parks and open space land in the city into parks and open space, but for some reason, we missed the D River Wayside, so we want to get that in. There also are some properties that have split zoning but unified use, we want to get some of those into a single zone that reflects how they're actually used, so that we don't have any possibility of unequal treatment. V R D amendment is possible, I'm not saying it's going to happen, I don't know, it's possible that things may come back, there may need to be other changes or something, so we want to be prepared for that in dealing with those, that, because I know it's a high priority for the council, that whatever is done on the V R Ds be done expeditiously. There's the R 110 Zone, we have, in the R 1 Zone, we have three different kinds of R 1 Zone, R 1 5, which is 5,000 square foot minimum lot size, R 1 7 5, which is 7,500 square foot minimum lot size, and R 1 10, which is 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. It's almost nowhere in the city. There is, up here along, off of Devils Lake, there's a very small area of R 1 10 property, includes a bunch of little tiny lots, I think, were they 10 feet wide, 10 or 12 feet wide? The idea was to provide lake access for people who bought lots in the particular subdivision there, but it's, it makes no sense to have a 10,000 square foot lot size for that area. There's, in the Agnes Creek area, there are some lots that are zoned R 1 10, they're almost all surrounded by open space property, and down in Taft area, there's this large area of R 1 10, but actually, that's the wastewater treatment plant and the police firing range, and so really have no functional, or almost no functional, R 1 10 zoning in the city, and I would just as soon do away with it and simplify things a little bit, so the idea would be to put all those properties into a more appropriate zone. Then, Comprehensive Plan update, I just want to show you this, this is the cover of the current Comprehensive Plan, you notice at the bottom of it, it says printed in October of 1998. In 2000, we did some revisions to the Comprehensive Plan, mostly relating to wetlands and shorelands. It is way past time for a more comprehensive look at our Comprehensive Plan, and we want to get the ball rolling on that. It will be a very long process, but it would be good to get things started, I'll be looking for grant funding and other ways to approach it, a lot of public input, a lot of process, but as I said, we'd like to get things rolling. The way the Oregon land use system works, you do a Comprehensive Plan, and then, until recently, every city that had a Comprehensive Plan had to update it periodically, it's called periodic review. We went into periodic review in 1996, we completed as much of it as we could in 2000, but technically, we are still in periodic review from 1996, because the Department of Land Conservation Development from the state put a task in our Comprehensive, in our periodic review work plan, that requires the county to adopt some ordinance changes in accordance with what we did, and the county has said, never going to happen. It's not part of their work plan, it's our work plan, and they have no interest in doing it. So, technically, since that's not done, we're still in the old periodic review, but I think with a new plan and the whole process, as long as we bring everything else into, or keep it, bring it into or keep it in compliance with the statewide planning goals, we should be good. But I think it's important to have like a visioning process and see what the community as a whole wants the community to become, as you said, this was done back in the, actually done before 98, this is just the printing in 98, so the idea is to bring it up to date and reflect the city's, the residents and citizens' current goals. Then, Urban Growth Agreement, by state law, we're required to have an agreement with the county on how things get managed, how land use issues get managed, and it's called the Urban Growth Area, which is the area between the city limits and the urban growth boundary. And this map, you can see in yellow is the area within the city limits, the white areas are the urban, well, the orange line is the urban growth boundary, so areas that are inside the urban growth boundary but outside the city, the white areas are the urban growth area, where we need to work out an agreement with this county on how that's to be managed. Typically, typically, there's one of two approaches that happens, one is, the agreement is, is that the city can basically apply its rules, the others, the county will apply its rules, and both, either, in either case, the other one gets to comment on it. Typically, in smaller communities, especially like ours, the county maintains jurisdiction, and we comment, or the city comments, or has some input on it, the agreement reflects exactly what that would be like. This is a priority for the city council, so we want to get this going, as it's required by state law, we just never had one. And then, there was planning for the gap, I'll let Deb talk about that a little bit.
I have talked about this in front of the Planning Commission before, so it might be a review for some of you. We got a grant from the Transportation and Growth Management Program in the state for $150,000 to do a planning effort in the area that's shown in the brown outline, and that is in about the Nell Scott area of town, it is at the north of the first long street there would be 23rd, and so there's a little bit of area north of that. A lot of this, most of this area is vacant or underdeveloped, along 23rd, we have some industrial uses, such as the car impoundment lot and the FedEx warehouse, those kinds of uses, we also have an approved multifamily subdivision in, that's brown up there, yep, and then it extends down to about 35th Street, so it captures the improvements that are going to be made to the highway in that area, and because that project is from 23rd to 32nd has a new intersection, it will be realigned, and we'll have a traffic light there, so, and we'll have walking and biking paths throughout. So, we are anticipating that this investment in infrastructure may spur some interest in development in the area. We have a number of properties for sale in the area, and Kate has been talking to people as they just happened to come in about other things to the planning department, and I have talked to several owners too, and they seem very interested in participating in the study, and that was my, my hope, that, you know, we would be doing something that was really interesting and beneficial to them. With these, with this money, we will be hiring consultants who have expertise in the private sector and in designing neighborhoods, and what we hope to accomplish is a neighbor, a real neighborhood, not just a development strip along the highway, which would probably be the tendency if we didn't, didn't make a broader plan, and, and an off-highway street network, so that, and I think this would really appeal to ODOT, so that when we get this new highway section with the turn lane and improvements, that new development doesn't just all force cars directly on and off the highway, that we will develop a neighborhood with a neighborhood center, and it will have a street network that will connect the commercial uses to the industrial uses, the jobs that might be in the area, and new residential neighborhoods and streets. So, that's kind of the goal that I have for the project, it's going to get started, it's actually underway, but our ODOT project contract manager is David Hilton, and David Hilton was the ODOT staff who helped us with our walking and biking plan, and we thought he was just great, he was, he was really helpful and a real advocate for Lincoln City. He is going to be working with us on this project again, he's developing a scope of work that we will use to request qualifications or proposals from consultants, and so we're kind of waiting on him for that, he's got quite a few irons in the fire, but he promises me that we'll still be on schedule to hire a consultant by the deadline in April, and then we'll get started on the project. I've had a number of consultants contact me about this project, so it seems like there's a lot of interest, and we've had consultants from, you know, the valley, basically, one of them is the consultant who designed the Olivia Beach development in Nell Scott, and so he's very familiar with the area, we have another, a couple other ones who either worked with him or are aware of his work and have done similar work elsewhere, so I'm thinking that, you know, we're going to have a nice pool of applicants to choose from. So, this is something that will involve the Planning Commission over the next year for sure, and maybe a year and a half or two, but I think that's something that we can talk about, is how involved you want to be, we will have a project advisory committee, and whether or not that's going to be the commission or some of the commission members in addition to the property owners and general public, maybe, and Richard, maybe you have some insight on that, I don't know whether we need to have some separation between the Planning Commission as the recommending body, or whether they could participate as advisory committee members also. I haven't really thought about that at this point, but one way or the other, you're going to be involved in reviewing the work of the consultants and the committee.
I think it would, either way would be okay, it's not, you're not deciding something about a specific piece of property.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, anyway, that's, I think that's kind of in a nutshell what this project's going to be about, if you have any questions.
Right now, are we going to have questions over the total, in a discussion, or, I've got questions about what you asked, or we're speaking about specifically.
Okay.
Now the time?
Sure.
Okay, great. You've got a really property there, and what I'm concerned about is that we just say, okay, this is going to be residential, here's the, you know, back, here's homes, and then maybe a little business up front. I'd like to maybe talk about some of the things we've talked about before, about mixing that up a little bit more, you know, with a little bit of business within the residential, some of that mixed use, so we can have a grocery store, something like that, or even, the familiar complaint is, we're just tied to 101 for business.
Mm-hmm.
To me, that we should be able to go perpendicular in this, and create little spurs where there are shops, that you could come off of 101 and enjoy that in a walking atmosphere, so you don't have to worry about getting run over, noise, and I'd like, I don't know if that's possible there, but when I would, let me draw, this would be perfect, and then something too, that I am getting more and more interested in, is type of attraction there, and it doesn't have to be something gaudy and awful, but it may be something that would reflect our heritage, something, a square, for lack of a better word, just somewhere to say, hey, come and see this, here's about Lincoln City it came from, that people will be drawn to see. Those are just my thoughts.
Well, that sounds great. One of the things I didn't mention before was that, the planning technique that we might use, and I have suggested in the grant request, that we have some innovative planning, possibly something, there's a technique called the Form-Based Code, and basically, it's kind of what you were describing, it's instead of saying specifically, this use goes here, and residential goes over here, it talks about the style and the look of the street and the buildings, and then there's a lot more flexibility in terms of the actual uses. Of course, we will have, continue to have some uses, you know, like car repair or warehouses that really don't fit very well in a residential neighborhood, but we still want to have connections so that if people want to walk to their place of employment, they can do that, and so.
The bike.
Yeah, exactly, so, so anyway, yeah, I think those are definitely the kinds of ideas we're going to be looking for.
Great, thanks. Questions, thoughts? It's a good piece of property, we need to be thinking about that.
Mm-hmm. Oh, and transportation system plan, okay. We started working with ODOT's help over a year ago on the transportation system plan, and this is something that the city has been trying to complete and have adopted for a number of years, and our relationship with ODOT has gotten a lot better in the last couple of years, one of the things that they agreed to do was to help us get a plan completed and approved. So, they have assigned us some consultants who are working with us and at ODOT's expense, and we are moving through the process, we have an advisory committee that is made up of the same people who are on their walking, the same groups who are on our walking and biking plan advisory committee, and basically, what we did for both of those was identify certain businesses or business groups and community groups that we wanted represented, for instance, we have somebody from the hospital, we have somebody from the Department of Health, and we have somebody from this, well, we're trying to get somebody from schools, I'm not sure we have anybody at the moment, we have somebody from the Nell Scott Neighborhood Association, and, so anyway, anyway, we have, we have a nice list of people, the tribe is represented, and this group is now working through the transportation system plan, we have a project advisory committee meeting coming up in March, people are welcome to come, and I think it's going to be the week of the 10th, probably the 11th or 12th or 13th, somewhere in the middle of that week, and we will follow up probably a month after that with a public event, so it'll be a chance for anyone to come and talk with the consultants and see what they've produced so far for work. One of the things, I do have a slide in here just showing crosswalk improvement, the work that's being done for the transportation system plan includes motor traffic, it includes walking and biking and transit, and so we are relying on the work that's already been done for the walking and biking plan, but we're expanding on that to include more transit-oriented and also, you know, like, for instance, intersection improvements, we've taken a look at the road diet idea that we were talking about, that might possibly work in Ocean Lake, and our consultants are saying that, you know, that does not look so likely now. The road diet idea, for those of you who don't know that term, is if you have, say, for instance, a four lane, but you don't have any center turn lane, if, you know, considering reducing that four lane down to three lanes, having a center turn lane be one of them, and then have extra room left over for bike paths, bike lanes, and maybe wider sidewalks and that kind of thing. But they're finding that the amount of traffic in the, in the Ocean Lake and the D Lake sections of town may be just too much, so that we won't be able to do that, but then we're looking at other ways that we can decrease congestion, and that might include traffic management, trying to figure out a way that maybe the businesses can encourage their hotel motel guests to come a day earlier or stay a day later, to kind of spread out that congestion that occurs on Friday afternoon in the summertime, and Sunday, and Sunday going the other way. Also, some, some technology, new technology is the way to manage transportation, and so anyway, though, you know, it's, it's a pretty involved process, I think it's going to hopefully come up with a lot of good ideas, one of the things they've done is compiled all the ideas that were ever generated for transportation improvements, and they're trying to figure out a way to evaluate those as to what will be the biggest bang for the buck, really, and what will really address those, those issues that really bother us here in Lincoln City, rather, I mean, because there are so many things we could do, that it would be a huge price tag to try to do them all, and of course, nobody has that much money, so we're trying to take a look at what we can do with the money that's available. Based on our past revenues, we might have $2.5 million for the next 20 years, and that doesn't go very far when you're talking about transportation improvements, unless you're talking about things like maybe traffic management and technology ways, rather than widening, widening lanes or adding lanes, you know, because that's where you really get into the big, big money. Transit is typically a lot cheaper than, than widening, street widening, and here, we're also constrained, not just financially, but also in terms of our topography and the way the built environment is already situated along the highway, so, so anyway, it's interesting, and I would encourage you all to get involved, we will be having presentations to the presentations. We will be having presentations to the planning commission and city council at some point in the near future, and also, the transportation system plan will come to you for recommendation to the city council when it gets to that point.
I'd throw in my two cents on this, I've said on both this and the biking and walking group, and for the commissioners, it's been very interesting. I think you should, or I would encourage you to attend any of these meetings. There's a lot that I didn't think about, just looking at a street, okay, what can we do with the street? And then, and I tell folks, you be here, is if you don't come up with your idea, my idea, it might not be the idea you want, so get in there and say what I think should happen. I brought a certain perspective, but that some people didn't think about, and vice versa. I would encourage everyone to get involved in this, it's a great idea, and I think there's some really good things coming out of this that are gonna help the city.
And another thing, I think this will help us, guide us in looking for funds elsewhere. There, generally, you know, we have opportunities every year for some state funding, but we have to compete for it, and it's spread rather thinly across the region and state. But ODOT will, is going to commit to providing, the likelihood of providing a pretty substantial amount of money. And so, we have, in the past, we've gotten grants for this Nell Scott project, and we just were approved for a grant north, from Logan North to East Devils Lake Road intersection. And a good part of the reason we probably got, were successful in that grant application is because the tribe offered a match of, I think, $300,000, so that, you know, that looks good. And so, that would be for an improvement at the Niatsu intersection, and then also bike path or shared path while walking and bike for that whole distance. And, so, you know, then we'll be looking in the future for what's the next project we're going to try to get money for, and so this is why the transportation system plan is important for prioritizing the improvements that we most want to see.
Great. And the next is the Villages at Cascade Head. As you know, we said you bought the Villages at Cascade Head property principally to preserve, it's called the Knoll up here in the northwest area of the Villages property. There's a preliminary master plan was approved years ago, I think in 96, for the entire Villages at Cascade Head property. And there was a refined preliminary master plan for the southern part of the project known as Rock Creek Village. Then, within this, there are, it's called blocks, and they have the letters on them, so Block N is up here, includes the Knoll, Block I is over here. The only development that has happened so far has just down here in this extreme southwestern corner, this Block A prime, as it's known, and it's the only place development has occurred. There is approved development in what was called Block A, a little bit further north, and of course, the road, Devils Lake Boulevard, has been put in up about this far, up to this wetland area, which is shown in green. Again, the city bought the property principally to preserve the Knoll. We want to start getting the property back into private hands, and so we'll be needing to work on planning for that, and depending on exactly how that carries out, there will be some responsibilities here at the planning commission. Likely, the first area that would be affected is this Block A down here, which has already been graded, the, most of the utilities are stubbed out, and, or at least the conduits are there for it. So, we'll likely see some things going there, and there probably will end up having to be a new master, a final master plan for that block, depending on what the developers propose, and that will be coming back here. And then, we may want to look at the entire project and see exactly what we want to do about that, how it, to possibly revise the existing master plan and think about selling it off gradually. So, that will obviously have some things for the commission to do. As I said, this, it probably, again, is a multi-year project, but we will start getting some of it back into private hands, I think, relatively quickly. Then, finally, I want to say, another thing that the commission will probably be involved in is response to any roads end planning initiatives. When I say response, it's because as part of the settlement agreement with, of the lawsuits that were involved on the annexation issue, it was said that the city would not initiate anything itself as far as zoning in roads end, for five years, and we won't. But I know that the Roads End Improvement Association is working on a proposal for zoning changes in roads end, and if that is, if they come in and ask for that to happen, then we have to be in a position to actually amend the plan and put in new zoning, if that's what they want, and make a decision or make a recommendation to the city council on exactly what should be done based on their, whatever proposals, excuse me, whatever proposals are brought to us. So I'm just, I have that on there, just so that you know that something may be coming. It's not city-initiated, it would be, again, the Roads End Improvement Association likely will be bringing something forward on their own initiative. I've been hearing about that.
Question, what does that five-year include, everything as far as, you mentioned the five-year?
Right. No zoning changes for five years, initiated by the city. And that, I'm not exactly sure when the five years started, but it would be roughly the first of this year.
Does that mean then that all of the county ordinances stay in place and none of the city armed supplies to that whole area there, or is it intermingled?
The existing county zoning would stay in place for five years unless somebody comes in and asks to have changes made, and ultimately, the city council agrees that that's a good idea. But I want to emphasize again, it's not, the city will not initiate anything as far as zoning changes for five years. Did I answer your question?
Yes, I just, well, because I just was never up to date on that. So like, the height thing is 30 feet in the county, that will stay there for the five years, and will go till 35, till five years is up.
Right.
Right, at the counter, we have a binder that Kate put together with all the zoning, county zoning regulations, and so we do a lot of flipping back and forth, and when we're not sure how they used to, or how the county applied something, we give them a call, and they tell us what they do. So, it's a little complicated, but it works.
Yeah, like, the way they figure setbacks are different from the way we do it, and the actual setbacks are different, the height limit is different, 30 feet in roads ends to 35 feet in the rest of the city for residential.
And so, like, the driveway, the distance, you can do the averaging for a couple houses either way down there, okay.
Question about initiate. Does that mean we can never have a discussion about it, or just don't start a process of changing?
I guess we can discuss it, but we're not going to, on our own initiative, do anything.
Right, I just can't see us sitting for five years and then on that date go, okay, now we're gonna talk about it. Do we not start planning ahead and just thinking, I mean, it's just a thought, it seems.
I think the five-year term just automatically, the city rules goes into effect out there, so it's already done.
Oh, okay, all right.
I think in keeping with the spirit of the agreement, it would be wise to not even talk about it. It's zoned now, it has a perfectly good zone on it, so there's no need in the sense of, you know, that it's the Wild West or anything, it's under county zoning. But if the Improvement Association or another organization or other persons want to bring something forward, certainly they're welcome to, and that's everybody's right, but it won't be anything coming initially from the city.
Okay, and they would be the only body that would recognize?
No, any person could bring something up.
Okay. Any resident of roads end?
Actually, any person at all could bring something up. It gets, it gets sticky when someone comes in and says, you know, I want to rezone his property.
Okay, it just won't come from staff?
Pardon me?
It just won't come from staff?
It won't, it won't come from staff.
Okay, got it.
And, let's clarify what Jim-
Or the planning commission.
Okay.
Or the city council.
Okay.
Let's clarify, Jim said something about at the end of five years, what happens at the end of five years up there then? Nothing automatically happens.
Nothing has to happen, it's just that we promised we wouldn't do anything for five years. It's to, just to keep the status quo, because that was a concern of some residences, is they don't want change, so we'll just keep the status quo. It will, after five years, you know, we can look at it again if someone else hasn't initiated something already.
Yeah, I have no dog in this fight, I just find it an interesting process, and I want to learn about it.
Or status quo, and stay the same, property taxes.
Okay? Yeah.
So, I just wanted to run these by you and see if you have comments on them, changes, additions, omitting things that should be omitted. It's the commission's goals, these are my suggestions, or staff's suggestions, but it's up to you all decide if you want to have these goals, different goals, additional goals, or whatever.
I'm looking forward to some of this, to pique my interest. My biggest concern right now is the BRD issue, I'm still pretty bugged about that.
And I'll mention on that, I appreciate you bringing it up, actually. The council held the first part of their hearings a week ago, and they've kept the record open, and will be taking more testimony on the 24th.
Fourth?
24th.
Monday.
Next Monday. And I encourage people who are interested to come and comment, participate any way they want. If they've already spoken, they don't get another chance to speak, but new people can come. I know a lot of people, always say a lot of people, I know some people at least didn't come because the weather was so bad. So this is another chance to come, and of course, they can submit written comments anytime, so assuming they close the hearing next Monday, then I don't expect a decision then, I expect they'll, I'm not gonna say what I, you know, that they will, but I expect they will put off deliberation for another couple of weeks to reflect on all the materials that they have in front of them, I mean, there's a stack of stuff that they've got to look at.
What would be the basis for coming back to us, council?
It's, I don't know, it's possible they could say, none of the above, you know, come back and start over, I don't, I just don't know, I just want us to be prepared to, I'm just saying, it could happen. I doubt it will, but it could happen. Bruce, you started it.
I was just, I was just, this might be a question for Mr. Appicello, the planning commission members in front of the city council? Question mark.
I believe they can, I don't have eyes in the back of my head, I don't know if he's nodding or going, but-
Scratching his chin.
Do you want to come up and speak?
We've had-
I'll move over when you have it.
Yeah, I'll let Richard speak on that. I know in some circumstances, it's inappropriate, but I don't know, Richard addressed it.
Are you talking about as a private, as a citizen or as a planning commissioner? Is that a curiosity?
Number one, you're not gonna show up and speak as a planning commissioner at the city council meeting. As a private individual, I probably can't tell you, you can't do that, I wouldn't recommend it. I mean, because part of the reason why you're here is you're, you know, gonna be fair and impartial and deal with the things that come before you based on the record, and advocating one way or another way is, on the record, is a good way to get yourself thrown off for bias when other things come back before you. So, most bias challenges point to things that you said, usually at public meetings or out in public or to the newspaper, and that'll help you get thrown off. So, you know, I can't tell you not to speak as a private citizen, but if you do speak as a private citizen, it could be used against you later when those kind of things come in front of you. So, if you're really concerned, I doubt that it's an ethics issue, but you can always call the government, that government ethics commissioner.
And I've done that, if nobody has, it's really a very painless experience, they're very helpful, if you do have questions.
I got a, kind of a follow-up. I know we're gonna work on the Village at Cascade Head sometime this year, you're gonna come before us, as an idea of what you're considering for that area, is that correct?
It's, that's probably correct, yes.
Because, you know, we've kind of discussed before about trying to attract certain types of development in that area, so that's gonna be on the table?
Yes.
And is there any plan for any change in the zoning on that at all? I mean, other than protecting the Knoll? You have everything in place already, is that gonna stay?
Probably not change, I mean, it's zoned R1, it is, actually, the way the planning development ordinance is written, it, even though it has the R1 zoning on it now, it could include a commercial element, so that would be allowed. Now, obviously, the piece that gets broken off for the Knoll, when I say broken off, it just gets set aside for, as open space, that ultimately would be rezoned for open space, so that there would be a zoning change there.
Listen, we'll have to go over that whole thing again.
Are we, speaking of Cascade Village, speaking of the Knoll, is there plans for making park more setting up there, upkeep trails, or anything going up Thumb, or?
The trail directly to the Thumb from the end of Logan Road, of course, for a brief distance crosses private property on a, on an easement, Forest Service easement. Obviously, we can't do anything to that private property, and it's a Forest Service issue, not ours. Getting there from the, from the Knoll, the existing trail that goes from the Knoll over to the Thumb also crosses private property. So that would need to be addressed, whether it was through an easement, or purchase, or land trade, or whatever, but that probably would require, you know, willing participation by the current property owners. There is, there's longer ways to get there that goes through some Forest Service land and probably through the, some Westwind, Camp Westwind land, and I know the Westwind people are very concerned about people going through their land for obvious reasons, you know, with the kids in the camp and so on, so to the extent something like that happens, going to the Thumb, that will require some really careful planning and consideration and working closely with the intervening property owners. There are other trails up in there that don't go to the Thumb, but go to the Knoll and other places in the Villages, and that's something we're looking at, we're mapping them right now, to figure out exactly where they are, through, with you actually hiking them, carrying a GPS antenna, so we can actually draw a line on the ground of where the trails actually are.
Richard, does the Cascade development area, does that kind of fall into being part of the urban growth boundary review and the transportation review, and what's going on that Deborah was mentioning at Niatsu, at that intersection? Because it seems like that's such a large area to be developed up there, that we want to be looking at those two other components as part of it.
It is, it's completely within the city, so- It is, it's completely within the city, so, within the city limits, so it wouldn't be part of the urban growth management agreement because it's not in that urban growth area. But I think the transportation system plan, yeah, we should kind of look at that, thinking about how that affects, because that, right now, the, that area, the villages of Cascadehead property is approved for eighteen hundred and twenty-nine dwelling units. I doubt it will ever develop anywhere near that number of units, but that's a lot of units, that's a lot of people which could have a tremendous impact on Highway 101 and other streets and at the north end of town especially. So, we want to look at that and also, frankly, it presents also opportunities, there's all that land there and ways to maybe change at least part of the flow of traffic so that, to lessen congestion south of there. Yeah, that's one thing we'll be looking at closely in the transportation system plan.
I have some more.
Oh, feel free, feel free.
Okay, in talking with a bunch of realtors, other contractors, I have about four items that I would like to add or at least bring them up for discussion. One that I thought was a little different, but mostly realtors talk to me about it, is they'd like to revisit the size of the big box stores.
Revisit what?
The big box store.
Okay.
Just the square footage, I guess there's been a lot of interest from some outside REIT tellers and it's just a little small for even their small store, so.
Yeah, for people who don't know, right now in the general commercial zone, we have a restriction on the footprint of commercial buildings that are allowed, sixty thousand square foot footprint, which, you think of the Safeway, the Safeway's about fifty-four thousand square feet, including their storage area in the back. Most big box stores want to be at least a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. So, this was, this, the intent of it was that there wouldn't be big box stores in Lincoln City. And what Commissioner Davis is suggesting that maybe we want to take another look at that.
Or at least the footage part of it, yeah.
The, and this is footprint, so square footage could be more, if it was a two-story big box store, it could be sixty times two, a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, or if it was a three-story, it could be, you know, three sixty, a hundred and eighty.
Two sixty thousand square foot buildings right next to each other.
Yeah, so there are ways to do a big box store that's larger than that, but it wouldn't be their typical business model.
Have you found, have you had any inquiries or found that people were not coming here because of that?
Years ago, I know that Fred Meyer was looking in the south end of town, I'm hearing rumors about their parent company looking at the north end of town right now, so we'll see.
Yeah, those things have happened. Suck 'em one, one I'd like to, you know, the bad one is revisit the residential landscape ordinance.
Yeah.
Not so much as to do away with it, but more to maybe have some kind of a structured timeframe. What I run into in my business mostly is people build homes, they get a mortgage, their kind of cash flow is depleted by the end of the project. I can see having them make them have the front yard planted upon move-in, but most people like to put their signature on their landscaping, their backyard or side yards, and to make them have the whole thing ready at move-in is, especially in the wintertime, it's just impossible to do a good job. So, it's a waste of money for most parks, they end up tearing it out within a year or so, or they just put bark down and very little plants just to get by and get a sign off so they can occupy their house. But I understand there's, you know, as far as runoff and that stuff, we have to protect that, but I just don't see the need to fully landscape.
Yeah, I don't know if I mentioned, also, one of the things we're looking at is the tree cutting ordinance, I'm really simplifying that, I guess I did mention it, so related to that, but yeah, it's-
We can take a look at that in our amendments.
One other thing because of Oregon weather is some way, and I know they do it in other areas, is to come up with some way to expedite the whole permit process, especially if you get an owner that comes in late in May and thinks that he can go in and get a permit in two weeks. You know, even if it's fee-based or something, be some way, nice to have some way of facilitating those that come in late. You know, and we've done it in other places where they've done it on overtime, they've actually paid the overtime for staff to work later, work on a Saturday and do their project type thing. And the last thing that I had a lot of people talk about, you know, we hit upon it, is they want to see more of those flashing beacons in town.
They do, they like them, oh, good.
You're talking crosswalks?
Crosswalks, yeah.
For the crosswalk thing?
Crosswalk.
You're not talking about flashing?
That's not on the ordinance.
But that's, that's under transportation and that's with ODOT, right? Because we don't have any control over the roads.
Well, in the TSP, one of the things that we're going to be looking at is proposals to improve certain intersections in town, so, with flashing beacons and painted crosswalks.
Yeah, it's, they're pretty dangerous the way they are now.
Well, some of them, yeah, they're just, yeah, and I understand that pedestrians are allowed legally to cross at any intersection, street intersection, but when it's totally unmarked and they're, and unlighted-
In a dark and raining-
It'd be very dangerous.
Wearing black.
Yeah, those are ninja pedestrians.
Come close, they've come close on that fog line sometimes, wow, it's dangerous.
Was there a consideration of synchronizing the stoplights going through?
That's part of the, that's ongoing right now, and I think that that was part of the deal when we decided we wanted to have the traffic control light at Thirty Second and we got approval for that. They also said, well, then we want to take a look at synchronizing. And it's always kind of a trade-off because if it's synchronized so the traffic can flow through, then it maybe puts the traffic on the side streets trying to enter at a disadvantage because then the lights aren't tripped by having someone pull up on a side street to the intersection of the highway. So, you know, it's kind of a trade-off maybe situation.
But there's, there are techniques now and controls that can really lessen the congestion caused by the lights and, you know, on Sunday afternoons, you want the lights set differently than you want them on Friday afternoons because people are going north versus people going south. But the controls are so sophisticated now that it's possible to really do improvements on that, and that's something that actually the city and ODOT are looking at very closely right now.
And ODOT, I know we've discussed this before, is the changing most of Highway 101 to a no-left turn lane, is that through ODOT only, we have nothing to do with that, is that correct? There's a couple of intersections where you can turn left at a light where you really shouldn't because it backs up the traffic, it's terrible, and is that strictly an ODOT decision? Or we just say, hey, we would like this to change?
It's ultimately an ODOT decision, but, you know, we do have input, if you're talking about like in Ocean Lake or something.
Right, right, because I know that discussions come up several times and-
And that's what, you know, Deb was talking a little bit about the road diet, there was a way of addressing that, but it, to create places where turning left is easier and potentially has less of an effect on backing up traffic. The problem with road diets is that once you get up to a very high traffic level, they end up not working very well, it's been the experience and as I understand it, we're sort of right on the line.
That would seem to be something that would encourage traffic to go through rather than slow it down, to impede it, because you're not going to have a car stop backing up twenty cars, one car making that turn.
Right, well, they've done some modeling on it and in our materials for our next project advisory committee meeting, we have some charts in there that show what the mobility standard is and what we would expect congestion to be if we reduce from four to three lanes. And it doesn't look very good for Ocean Lake, Andy Lake, it looks good for Taft, but we don't really have people complaining about traffic flow so much in Taft. So, you know, then we're looking at, well, is it worth it to provide for bike lanes there, you know, so lots of different considerations. But yeah, the materials for the project advisory committee meeting will be coming out probably in the next week or two and they'll be on our website, we'll have a link, but it's also on LincolnCityTSP.org, is that right? That sounds right, yeah, so, and that has all the, all the materials that we've reviewed so far and a schedule for completion of the plan, so, and anything, you know, anything we're trying to highlight, like an upcoming meeting or something like that.
It is possible that some places, it might be appropriate for no-left turns, I think it would, inconvenience a number of people. But, you know, there's a saying that two wrongs don't make a right, but three rights make a left, and so it's possible that there's ways around it.
Okay, I was just curious if it's something we're going to discuss now or later or, that's, that's, that is my question. Anyone else have something to add to the goals? I do.
I mean, are you basically, I guess, in agreement with these things, do you want to-
Well, I'd like to add-
The things that Mr. Davis brought up, are there things you want to add?
Absolutely. My concern, and I've got something I'd like to add, but my concern is, I want to, I'd like to know that we're going to actually have a plan for attacking these things. Do we have a schedule so that when we have these meetings where we don't really have anything to talk about, are they just going to be plugged in or are they going to be scheduled? That we start biting into this comprehensive plan issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes to both, I mean, we will plug things in where we can and we will probably try to work up basically a work plan.
Okay.
For instance, on the fourth, we'll be doing training. Giving you advance notice of that right now, we have nothing else on the agenda for that. Some of these things, like the TSP, that depends on when that project is completed to a point where it would be brought forward. Roads End thing totally depends on people outside, has nothing to do with us being able to schedule it because we don't know if or when something will come forward.
This is more, I guess, the way I work, is I just like to have a plan sitting there that even if we're not going to talk about it, we at least say, okay, we're not going to talk about it tonight, but it's there still and keep moving forward. That's all I'm asking for, because I'm an out of sight, out of mind kind of guy, and I like to keep it in my sight. Couple of, one thing that, as I was going through the comprehensive plan, I was interested to see, because we brought this up via Bama, and of course, Bay Area Emergence Association being particularly interested in development of business down there, is the development, I'm trying to find, it's on page forty-five right now. It's, "Development of community docking and pier facilities within estuary shall be limited to the Taft area, so let's be, the planning commission shall consider the following many proposals, the size and shapes of the docks, its use and things like that." And we brought forward a proposal for building, and I don't know the exact word, if we're talking piers, wharfs, whatever is parallel to the shore, I believe is a-
A boardwalk?
Yeah, we've talked about that and, and working with Sandy Pfaff of the VCB is, her continual drumbeat is, we need attractions. And that is an attraction, it's an area where we can do these things theoretically, and I just want to make sure that we're moving in that direction, that we're not just having events constantly, that we have a nice attraction where people can go and enjoy themselves, not only visitors but citizens too. And so, is this still something we can talk about?
Sure, we can talk about that, and the, of course, there's private property, like if you want to do, like a, basically a boardwalk on, there's private property that has to, either has, they either have to sign on or be avoided. And I know Urban Renewal was looking hard at this years ago and found it largely intractable, but maybe things have changed. The other side of that is on the other side of the property line, that we get into the Department of State Lands and their issues and DLCD, with their issues of development of the beach. So, that's, but that's just something that we can look at and see just what the possibilities are.
So, at the same time we were discussing the boardwalk down there years ago, we were talking about a water park also, we were looking at the old Hershey site, remember that, the renewal, the same time with Bama, we were going through that and the boardwalk.
And, forgive my ignorance, but being new to the show here, is, you know, what can we do on Devil's Lake? Can we develop anything like that, any type of walk? I've gone down there many nights and thought, this would be a great place just to walk along the shore on some kind of boardwalk.
It's pretty tough when you, when you come up with that kind of idea after people have already developed and are used to having their property extend down to the water, you know? Ideally, yeah, we would have thought of that before, before all those people brought their lake, lake lodges.
We did have that location just up from the Dee River, or the bridge down there on Dee River, you know, a long time ago, we had that canoe launching point.
Right.
We had people that had, you know, canoes, you could rent there, we had a little snack shop and everything like that.
It just seems such an undeveloped-
I think the city bought that property?
Yeah, the city owns that now, the nice thing about the fact we own the north shore of the rivers, that we can say, when this is developed, we want a walkway included in that. That can be, that can be just a given, we can say, we would love to have you develop it subject to this requirement, because we own it so we can dictate the terms under which we sell it.
That'd be perfect.
When we get into parkland and open spaces, then that's really under the purview of the park board to recommend to the City Council, and we have a 2001 master park plan that's ready for an update. So, that's another thing that we'd like to be doing, and we've been talking about it on the park board for about a year now, and so it's just a matter of finding the time to get all these things done. But that's our intent and I think it would be very useful at this point in time because we've really had a lot of changes to our public spaces, we've added public spaces and facilities, so time to refresh that plan.
And something that I really appreciated is when we took that trip, we took the little field trip down to the Gap area.
Ah, yes.
I'd like to know if there's a way that we can work that in somehow, I don't want to call it field trips, it sounds kind of elementary school.
Oh, no, I think that's fine.
But it was sure nice to have everyone together, looking at the same thing, talking about the project without just the picture, and I'd love to see, just when we have some of these issues, to be able to get out together and go see them.
Sure, it's a great idea, we can do that easily, we just have to give public notice of it so that, you know, because the council has a meeting, so the public has to be able to be there. They don't have to be able to be in the van with us, but they have to be able to be there and the press has to be able to be there.
I'm wondering if any of the commissioners would be interested in going to any meetings, we have the Coastal Planners meeting a couple of times a year, we have the Oregon American Planning Association meetings typically in Portland, and the Oregon Planning Institute in Eugene. They do come with a price tag, but this is budget time, so if anybody, you know, is interested, there's usually a planning commissioner rate and we could figure out a way to-
These are usually two or three day meetings, one in Portland and one in-
I would be interested.
And sometime, and people can choose to go just one day out of the three sometimes, so, you know, maybe we could arrange a, you know, transportation for a couple of people.
We'll see if we can budget for it.
Yeah, or at least get heads up on them.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Last question I had, you mentioned something about the rezoning of the Dee River wayside, now that's a, that's a state park.
Right.
What does it matter what we-
It's not, it's not, certainly not critically important, it's about basically consistency, when you look at the zoning map, you look at it and say, oh, that's a park, that's not recreation, commercial land. You know, it's not, it's not a commercial development, it's zoned for park, it's for-
Hiding a paperwork.
Basically.
Okay, it doesn't mean anything.
It's also an impression that, you know, if someone looks at our zoning map, you know, it could be- It's also an impression that, you know, if someone looks at our zoning map, you know, it could be confusing.
Okay. So if someone wanted to park a food bender truck in that area, they have to go to the state parks to get their permission? Or do they come to the city?
Yeah, they have to get permission from state parks and they also have to get permission from us. If it's in the state park itself, it's on the 101 right of way, they just have to get permission from us.
You know, I got thinking about when we were talking about the cottages and such last, last meeting, I forget what we.
Cottage clusters?
Is, you know, there's mixed commercial use. And, you know, we've visited the food cart thing, and my opinion is I don't like them. But I think there could be a place for something like that on a small scale because you really couldn't have a storefront supported there, especially if it's a weekend visited place. But maybe we need to look at, could someone put a small temporary tail outlet there? That might be interesting to a young entrepreneur.
And that raises an interesting issue too, because we don't have anything in our ordinance that specifically allows what we would call temporary uses. You know, the food carts are sort of something unto themselves, but it may be that, you know, it'd be, it'd be good to have something. I'm not coming up with examples off the top of my head, but just something to spring up at Christmas time, you know? Or during the summer, it'd just be there. And other than, you know, Christmas tree sales and fireworks sales, it's just, so we may want to look at temporary uses.
I think we do need something with some flexibility. Because of the vagaries of the seasons and tourist traffic, I think it'd be a lot of enticement. Pursue that. That's what I've got. Else?
Nothing. They're all good, so I don't mean this question to sound bad. I just was curious again, because you said at the beginning, and I didn't catch it. What requires us to set the goals every year? Is it our ordinance or is it state?
The planning commissioner rules.
Okay.
Which is something we can train you on too. We can give you a copy of them.
There you go.
Yeah, I think you owe me a copy of the committee, the planning commissioner rules. It'll be a multiple choice test.
There are online, but we can provide them physically too.
I like paper. It's easy, my short attention. Later and. Okay. Thank you so much. Anything we need to do with this besides thank you?
No, thanks for your input.
Thank you.
I think we're good to go.
Is that two reports and comments? Can you tell them the director?
Had something. I don't remember what it is now, so I have nothing.
Okay. The attorney? Nothing?
Actually, I know what it was. I already said it was about the, the city council continuing to consider the VRD issue. And I should also tell you that the other three hearings, the revision, the accessory dwelling units, and the cottage clusters, they put off, they did not hold hearings on that. So they put that off until next Monday as well. And it may be possible they will continue one or more of those again. But I just wanted to let you know what's happening on, on the recommendations that you made.
Bob Rich was talking. I thought of something. You mentioned that, you know, what's the reason to rezone the wayside and take it from our sea to, you know, state parks or parkland or whatever. And I guess the importance is, is that, you know, your, your comp plan, including the map and your zoning code, need to be, you know, active documents. They, they need to be kept up to date. But you need to think about it in terms of there's an allocation of residential land there and an allocation of commercial development there that's being wasted. So like when we talked about the villages property, we talked about, well, we'll be changing at some point the, a portion of that residential property to open space. Well, you don't want to lose the units that were allocated to that. They don't, they shouldn't evaporate. We should reallocate them somewhere. So when you think about updating or correcting mistakes on the map, think about them as allocating the residential and commercial space to reallocating them to somewhere else.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you. Where was I? Oh, I have a quick question. And I just opened up a big can of worms. But something that came up at city council during that discussion was the mayor had said, I don't want to hear this. I wanted to hear this. And he wanted a certain, a certain style or format of input from the citizens. And I'm just curious, how do we communicate that to people? If we're going to consider something, we want to hear something in particular. How do, how do we convey that to people so that they prepare to tell us these things? Or is that even possible?
Was he asking, I know a couple of times during the hearing, he was saying, asking if they had specific suggestions or preferences about what was being proposed. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and there was.
Yeah, because he was, what was, what people were saying was philosophical. We don't want regulation or whatever.
Well, he also brought up about the economics. He says, okay, we've heard enough of that economics. Here's what I want to hear.
Yeah, he was saying, you know, we're here, we're having a hearing on this, these specific ordinance. He says, what's your, what's your concerns about specific provisions, just as you said? And I don't know if there is a good way to do that. We say in the introduction, you know, in that long spiel is, you know, comments should be addressed, addressed to these standards or other standards you believe apply, you know?
I just don't know if there's a way to educate.
I don't, I think it actually is, it probably has to be drawn out by questions, to be honest with you. The, the people holding the hearing have to draw it out.
Most people already are come with their own agenda and their own yes, and it's really hard to talk.
Yeah.
Especially when there's nothing that said, here's what I really want.
Right. I mean, I could see where the mayor was coming from. I mean, do you like the yes, no? Do you like Alt 1, Alt 2, or nothing, you know?
And, yeah, and I wasn't discussing that in particular, just the idea of how do we, we face some issues.
Yeah. Well, if we put it in the agenda or somehow came up with an agenda statement that said, we're particularly interested in it.
Yeah, because my concern is I really like the citizen input. And I want it to be comfortable and I want the people coming before us to feel comfortable saying what they want to say, but also to, hey, we do really have to get to a point here. And I just, it's a thought that I.
I think that's why you have really long meetings, and I don't know that there's a whole lot you can do about it. We limit it now and some municipalities don't limit the public into it. We limit ours to three minutes, and I think that's about as good as we're going to get. I mean, and I completely understand what everyone's saying, what the mayor was saying that night was, hey, we get the economics. We get that you have people who are cleaning these vacation dwellings that could lose their job. I mean, because you hear this thing over and over again, but, but like Nate was saying, when people come to the meeting, they've driven here for however far they've come, and they already have decided what they want to say, they want to say it. Even though the five or 10 people have said it in front of them, they want to be up there and they want to say it too. And so, and like you said, you want people to be able to speak. And so I think, I don't know, unless you got other, I think three minutes, limiting them to three minutes is a good way to do it. But at least it gives everybody their opportunity to say what they want to say.
Get a chance to speak, and then obviously that's really important. But I'll go back to, I think it's, you know, it's the city councils or the planning commission's role if they, if they are. I'll speak about the, I believe, the planning commission's role. I guess that's as far as I can go. But if there's things you want to know, ask. You know, people, as you say, get up, they've got, they've got their own agenda. It may not be your agenda. So if you want to find out what they think about something, it's just ask.
And he did, I think the mayor did a good job that night about that because after somebody would speak, sometimes he would ask, hey, are you in favor of, you know, Alt 1, 2, or VRD 2, 3? Because sometimes, you know, and I've found that we've done that before. I think I've asked people, I'm not quite sure what side you're on. I'm just wanting to clarify that because you want to know, so.
But then a good example is you'll find, doesn't matter if you ask them, they'll still say what's on their mind.
Oh, yeah, they're still going to say what they want to tell you, yeah, either way, so.
I just, I've talked to a lot of people who for the very first time in their life showed up here and wanted to participate. It was, it was a scary experience. And a lot of them I had to talk into staying because it's like, I don't want to do this. I don't want to do this. And it got intimidating to them. And I just wanted to be able to say, here's what we're looking for. Try to craft what you're saying into this and give us your opinion. That's all I'm after, just a way to communicate that to people. Maybe we just need to do it before we have our meetings or maybe through the newspaper or something like that.
It can be done, you know, when, when you're calling for public comment, you know, you just say, you know, basically what you said, we're particularly interested in hearing about your views on X, Y, and Z. Like VRDs, we're particularly interested in, should there be yes, no zones? Should there be an overlay or whatever? Should there be a limit on the number of days? And if so, what should it be? That kind of thing.
Okay, all right. That's fair.
Which is why I actually remember in the, when we had the hearing here, I gave you a list of like 10 things that I wanted to hear what your views were on, and that's, so that's exactly the kind of thing.
Okay.
And we could incorporate that into our scripts, you know, if they're. And especially, you know, I guess when we have public hearings on, say, variances or conditional use permits, you have criteria and, and you're supposed to judge the application by the criteria. So in that case, the most helpful public testimony is how does this application, this project fit those criteria? And if there are problems, then, you know, it's good for the speakers to identify those for us.
Sometimes something that's helpful if you don't know, at least I've found that sometimes somebody will be up there speaking for two minutes and I still don't know what side they're on, what they're trying to say. And in some municipalities, what they'll do is they'll have your people in favor of speak or not necessarily in that order, and then the people who are against it speak. And that way you know what their position is when they come up.
And the quasi judicial, that's exactly what we do.
Okay.
We ask for proponents, opponents, neutral. But that's where it's on a specific piece of property. And the legislative things, it's a much more open, amorphous process.
Maybe we could, I don't know if we could structure that somehow and say, people who favor. But, but I think a lot of people who talked this time were not necessarily in favor of one alternative or the other.
Yeah, the VRD would have been a complicated one to do.
Yeah, it would not really be complicated.
Okay. Well, that's just a general question. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Planning commissioners?
I got nothing.
Nothing, nothing?
Little comment I'd like to make about the VRDs. I think we did a good job in some of the changes we did. But I would like to have more input on the zoning changes themselves and ordinance changes because all the new things coming up that we're talking about, you know, creating more tourism down there, more attractions. I'd hate to shoot ourselves in the foot by limiting too many things where the wallets will not open.
Okay. Is that it? Everyone good? All right. Public comments on non-agenda items not involving a public hearing. Please limit comments to three minutes. None, nobody. Future agenda items and next meeting?
It's the March 4th, next two weeks from tonight. And as I said before, we'll be doing planning commissioner training.
Okay, so next scheduled meeting Tuesday, March 4th, 2014, 6:00 PM. One last thing I will throw in, just a reminder of the beach park at the eventuary this Sunday from 4:00 to 7:00, benefiting the beach park, which provides funds for animals that have been hurt and need surgery and/or spay neutering program. So from 4:00 to 7:00, you get a taste of all the great food in the world for the eventuary. So that's what I have. The 22nd, yes. Is that right? No?
It's the 18th.
Third, 23rd. What time?
Or is it Saturday the 22nd? Saturday, thank you.
Saturday?
It should be here, not me. All right.
With that?
We're adjourned. Thank you.